Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our regularly scheduled meeting Thursday, November 2, 2023. I call our meeting to order and ask that we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Does anyone have any changes or additions to the agenda? Are you speaking, Tiffany? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Our next section is our public comments section. This agenda is reserved for people in attendance. We are getting a feedback somewhere. This is, section of the agenda is reserved for people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. The board requests that comments be limited to three minutes or less. People wishing to comment should type comment and their name in their name in the chat box will be recognized. Before we start, Andy, did you want to say something, please?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Hebrew Board of Selectmen. I think Mark Stewart's got some background, I don't know if he knows that, but he's popping up as a speaker. But, um, so we anticipated, we've got a lot of emails, I've got a lot of calls this week regarding an item on the agenda, which is the Parks and Recs approval of their new policies, which is item 8B. So I was asked if I could just try to present some clarification on where we started, where we are and what the process is. So I'll try to do that as quick and in layman's terms as I can. So the Park and Rec policies was an update that started about a year and a half ago. The policy that are in place and have been in place for many years are still in place. I think that's a big part of the confusion. The policies that are being considered and redlined and underscored are the policies that the Parks and Rec Commission were recommending be updated by the Board of Selectmen. So at this time, the policies that are in place, the carrying of firearms in parks is allowed if you have illegally possessed pistol permit. The law changed about a year ago from open carry to concealed carry, so if anybody right now legally can do that, that is allowed because there's nothing in the present policies that are in place right now prevent that. What changed is the Parks and Rec Commission, when they're updating this new policy, they added open space in the trails. The original policy just covered Parks and Rec. So in doing so, they added language regarding firearms that was submitted to my office, sent to the town attorney and to the Board of Selectmen for consideration. So there's a couple options that we could do. There's no rush, we're not trying to rush this. If this is a big item that needs more attention, I would recommend to the Board of Selectmen that they don't try to push this through, they get more input, more education and here to citizens. But the Commission, I've talked to them, I've talked to the direct Parks and Rec Director. There's a couple ways you can do this. You could keep that portion of the policies alone, the way it stands right now, or you could move forward with a couple different ways. You could have a carve out that would make all the parks, for instance, Burn Hill Park, Grayville Park, Veterans Park, the Ball Field, the Old Colchester Road, St. Peters, with this policy and approval by the Board of Selectmen, you could prohibit weapons, at least in the policy, if you so choose. Still be hard to enforce, and I know Officer Rivera will talk to that, and I think that's one of the reasons the town attorney wanted us to be careful on how we move forward. But I just want to make it clear that nobody here, and I'm not speaking for all the Selectmen, but nobody here is promoting to enhance or change so there's more guns carried at the parks and Recs or the open space. This is just a policy change. That was a recommendation that was brought up by the committee to the Selectmen for to consider, and this is still being talked about, and I think with the emails and the calls we got, I think it probably should continue to be talked about before you make a decision. So I just wanted to make that clear before public comment. That's not to deter anybody's comments. That's just maybe clarify, talk to two people today on the phone that wanted letters read into the record, and I spoke to them, and once I explained what I explained here, they are very happy and they understood. So hopefully, hope this helps, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And just to, again, reiterate, at this point in time, there is no policy at all, correct?
It doesn't, well, it, there's nothing in the town's policy, so what supersedes that if there's no policy is the state
State laws.
State statutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Donna?
So Kevin Tulamary is our first public comment.
Yes, hello. Thank you, Chairman and members of the Board of Selectmen. Kevin Tulamary, 110 Kenny Road, and I would indeed like to comment on the new park and open space policies. And firstly, actually, I'd like to talk about the Policy Section 20 on farming. And I would certainly like to express that the presence of agriculture in is especially important in our open spaces and our historic hedgerow farm land needs to be supported and encouraged, which I do. But I also think it's important to recognize that the safety of residents and visitors must be addressed. The Section 20 in farming states that chemical herbicides and pesticides, quote, "must be in accordance with all applicable state statutes and general town ordinances and only with approval from the director," end quote. That's a good step, however, this does not address concerns regarding what chemicals are being used in Hebron's parks and open space or require notification as to what is being applied and when it will be applied or if it has been applied. In July 2022, the Parks and Rec Director Craig Bryant was notified with concerns about the use of unidentified toxic chemicals on the cornfield located in the Raymond Brook Preserve and across the street at 17 Kenny Road. Concerns were raised about the proximity to park visitors, nearby households, drinking water wells, and Hebron Elementary School, which is right across the street. These concerns include whether dangerous neonicotinoids are being used, which are known to be hazardous to a wide range of mammals, including humans, as well as birds, pollinators, and aquatic life. In 2016, the state of Connecticut categorized neonicotinoids as, quote, "restricted use," end quote, "due to their harmful effects." And in February 2023, the Connecticut Autobahn Society submitted testimony to the State Environmental Commission, reading in part, "Neonicotinoids are persistent in the environment and are water soluble, meaning that they are easily transported from application sites to wild untreated areas," end quote. "The Raymond Brook Preserve is a vital part of the Raymond Brook watershed, leading directly into the Raymond Brook Marsh, Hebron's most important future drinking water supply. Neonicotinoids have no place in Hebron's parks and open space, and the residents of Hebron's and visitors need to be informed on what chemicals are being used and when." In the section on the firearms, I understand that there'll be, hopefully, be more discussion about this, but I think that it would be important to keep Hebron law ordinance in line with Connecticut state law, which
The three minutes is up, please wrap up.
Okay, thank you. I think it's important to keep Hebron law in line with Connecticut state law. Law banning carrying of handguns in state parks was upheld by a federal Supreme Court judge in July 2023. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And next up is Greg Shortell.
Thank you, Donna. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Greg Shortell, 22 Kenny Road. Now that the DPW Action Committee has been formed and has the monumental task of overseeing the day-to-day activities involved with the ongoing DPW facility project, I simply would like to reiterate the results of the DPW townwide survey that was taken earlier this year. The purpose of the survey was to learn more about the public's awareness and concerns regarding the proposed Department of Public Works facility building project. The survey was made available to all Hebron Town residents. 725 people completed the survey. Ninety-six percent of the respondents were residents. 717 respondents had comments. That makes up 98% of those who completed the survey had something important to say. Respondents were asked to rate their levels of concern with the following potential issues regarding the building project. The following issues are what the majority of residents were most concerned with or very concerned about based on the weighted average of results: the location, salt storage contamination, land preservation, and taxpayer cost. In the survey, when asked if they have a site preference for constructing a new DPW facility, 68.5% of the respondents stated the old Colchester Road location is preferred. May I remind you, the survey was made available to all Hebron residents, not just Kenny Road residents. I would like to share just some of the 129 comments that were captured in the survey. "Anywhere other than the property, the Horton property or watershed area. Rebuild, reuse existing site. Why bring this problem to a beautiful, unspoiled part of town? Fix what you have. Not many towns are building new facilities, especially small towns like ours. It should not have fallen into the disrepaired state it is currently in. The cheapest. The center of town for public works? What are you thinking? I would like to see some forward thinking about the old Colchester Road site, not just the conditions listed in the project summary. I am totally against the new construction ideas. Old Colchester Road facility upgrades will meet the town's needs. Not every truck needs a garage. Salt storage, truck traffic, both need to stay away from valuable, clean water." I urge the DPW Action Committee to give serious consideration to and incorporate the people's expressed preferences as outlined in the survey, survey findings, when making decisions related to. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you.
And next up is Dave Souza.
Thank you, Donna. David Souza, 278 West Street. And I'm speaking as a citizen, not as an elected official or member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm calling to first agree with Kevin Tulamary's comments about Section 20 of the proposed changes to the Parks and Recs policies. I agree that more needs to be thought about in terms of what is allowed on these lands that are public lands. But my main concern is on Section 21 and possible changes to the, you know, adding the clause that would enable the use of concealed firearms on town lands, specifically parks and open space and recreational trails. I am greatly opposed to this change. I don't understand why it's needed. If there's a concern about safety, which I've, I walk all the time in trails and lands in Hebron, and I've never felt threatened at all, but I would feel much more threatened if people are allowed, if other people on the trail are allowed to carry firearms. I think this is a solution looking for a problem, and I greatly wish that the Board of Selectmen would not go forward with this, with this clause. I can also say that's not just myself. I have had the opportunity the last few days to meet a lot of friends and neighbors at various gatherings, and I brought this topic up several times, and each time, each and every time, people were gassed at the change and also opposed to the change. So I wish the Board of Selectmen would reconsider this and look forward to your discussion on it. Thank you very much.
And that, oh, here we have one more, Jean Tulamary, and let me just unmute her. Give me a second here. Jean, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Should she try to hang up and call in again?
Yes, she could give that a try because I've, I've done what I need to do on this end. I'm not sure what the, you know, what the controls are on the phone and on unmuting on the phone end.
Let's say it was, usually it's one of the buttons on the side, but if you're not familiar with it. Okay, that may have been her that left. We'll give it a second, see if she comes back on. Mr. Chairman. Are you there, Peter? Are you there, Peter? Are you there? Okay. Yes.
Sorry about that. I probably should get a computer. All right, well, tonight I was, I wanted to just say to the board that everyone I meet and know around here loves our open space. And in our super busy world, our open space is just playing a huge role right now, a bigger role than ever before. However, I personally feel our open space comes with civic responsibilities, and there really are some gray areas. The unannounced use of chemical weed killers has been evident in recent years. And while we residents don't know the exact agricultural chemical combination of the weed killers, we have witnessed the massive spray trucks, dead plants but living corn, clumps of dead bees in our yards, and for 48 hours following sprays greatly reduced black fly activity. Are these related? I don't know. But I know that mists from spray trucks can travel as much as a mile on the breeze and that they dissolve into our ground and drinking waters. Spraying, especially in parks and open space while people are close at hand and often jogging, just seems unhealthy. The proximity to schools and homes is concerning, and these sprays, although they're quite beneficial for our farmers by greatly reducing the weeds, there's growing evidence to suggest that they're not beneficial to other life forms. And at one point in time, Hebron and the Raymond Brook Marsh boasted some clean, clean drinking water. If the aquifer is the town's future supply of drinking water and the marsh feeds the aquifer and our farmland feeds the marsh, it's probably time we pay a little bit more attention to what we put in our farmland. And likewise, we all have the privilege in this country of being able to own guns and animals, but both guns and animals come with laundry lists of pros and cons, especially in our public settings. Everyone packing guns or exposing their animals to the public takes on certain responsibilities, both emotional and legal responsibilities. And I just think that it's up to all of us to do our civic duty, to act responsibly where both issues are concerned, especially on our public lands, because we really wouldn't want to lose our privileges. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, moving on. Our next section would be our Good to Know Special Recognition. Andy?
I think Selectmen Tealy was going to introduce something. Am I, am I correct, Tiffany?
Um, you are, but I don't see it in the packet. I mean, I had submitted something in writing to be included here.
We could put it up, I believe, if you give Donna.
That'd be great.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have it prepared. Give me a reminder.
It's the thing, what was happening in Marlboro?
Okay.
And I believe it's Hampton, I'm not sure.
No, it was, it was Marlboro.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Hang on.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I sent it through kind of late, so no worries.
This is your moment, so, but I agree with what you were saying. It's just sad.
Yes, yes, it is.
Yeah, I have friends in New York who are Jewish, and they're both, you know, very elderly, very elderly, and they're scared to death to go out of their house. And that's sad that we as a country have stooped to this level.
There's Peter.
Did you just want to kind of ad lib until she finds it and is able to get it on?
Sure, happy to, Mr. Chairman. So as many of you may be aware, there were some leaflets dropped in Marlboro, and I believe Glastonbury as well, there were some that popped up there. And they are incredibly racist. It is part of an organization that has been dropping these leaflets, advocating for an all-white America. And so as you can imagine, when these popped up in Marlboro, it was quite stunning because it's the next town over. So Code reached out to me and they asked if we would consider making a statement of unity along the same lines as the Marlboro Democrats and Republicans also made a statement, a combined statement together, and they asked us to consider something that they put in writing for us. So I can read it, and then if there are any friendly amendments, I'm open to that as well. So I will read it now. Early, well, this would be last Wednesday, I believe. Last Wednesday morning, many residents of Marlboro found a flyer in their driveway from the Nationalist Social Club. "This group promotes itself as a pro-white, street-oriented fraternity dedicated to raising authentic resistance to the enemies of our people in the New England area. Members espouse racism, anti-Semitism, and intolerance. The town of Hebron denounces the hate-filled ideology of this group. We stand in solidarity with our neighbors in Marlboro as they work to root out hate, fear, and discrimination, and to ensure that hate has no home here."
And thank you for reading that. As I've said over and over and over again myself, you know, people are people. We need to treat people as people. You know, we are all, actually, reading, supposedly, at one point in time, going way back, the human population was down to quite literally a couple or few thousand. So quite literally, we are all somehow related. You know, you have to go back a few years. But it's, it's, we're not going to get out of this, this mess that we as a country and in fact as a world are in without sitting down and trying to find common ground. You know, it's, I don't know how else to say it. You know, you can't have an open conversation without somebody trying to wave some sort of a banner of, you know, whatever in your face. You know, part of what made this country great was the fact that we could disagree, but at the end of the day, come out with a common goal to go forward. And what I see going on, it just breaks my heart. You know, I'll open it up to whoever. Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I think the only thing that I would suggest that we talk about a little bit is maybe in that last paragraph, I don't, making a broader statement to reflect our support for any group, not this group, but any group. We don't stand for this for any group. So I don't know if Tiffany, maybe you could talk, maybe that's something we could consider because I think we recognize the event, but I don't think, I think it's an opportunity to express our position in general about whether it's this group or any group that brings this hate ideology to our, to our doorstep. I think we should make a broader statement. So that's just a thought. So that last sentence, specific to the event in Marlboro, I think we could consider it just a broader, simpler statement saying that we don't stand for this period. That's my first reaction, Mr. Chairman. So I think it's, we should do something, but I think we could make a broader statement potentially.
Okay. Mark, Tiffany?
I accept that as a friendly amendment. That's no problem. If you, if you'd like me to rewrite it, I can send it back to everybody and we can show it at the next meeting. So happy to do that.
Okay, as I say, it's, it's, you know, it's just sad. And as I say, I think, I think things are getting far worse, not better. I've never seen the, the level of discourse between so many peoples, and it's worldwide. It's, makes you wonder where the human race is going. Mark?
Tiffany, whatever you write, write it in the most unequivocal terms that reflect how disgusting, deplorable, and offensive any of that speech.
No.
What's that? I wasn't, and
I don't know who, I don't know what, I don't know.
You know what that was? I don't think you can write emphatically enough how disgusting that is. Just as a personal note, 42 years ago, I became a policeman for things like this. And to stand up against, against bullies, to people who offend and hurt others and to represent those who don't have a voice and don't have a violent bone in their body and need, need somebody to protect them from individuals like that. This is so personal to me. My, my wife is Jewish. This, this disgusting to me, and I'm, I'm just in support of anything that condemns us. That's my feeling.
Okay. Thank you for bringing it up. I did not know it even had happened until I'd gotten a call literally just before the town, town hall staff was going for the day Friday that it even happened. You know, but I don't know what they feel they're going to gain. I just, anyway, anyway, moving on. Thank you. Andy? Do you have a proclamation or no?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
Appointments and Appointments and resignations.
Yes, sir.
So, at this time, to comply with the Hebron Town Charter, Chapter 3, Section 805, Appointment of the Town Attorney. I'm going to subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen, may appoint and remove the Town Attorney, who shall be an attorney at law or a firm of attorneys at law. Admitted to practice in the state, shall serve for a two-year term of office, commencing on the second Tuesday following the town elections. So, this, um, this board is here tonight. This will get this done. This board will be still intact at the next meeting after the election, so we need to get this done to comply with the charter. I'm recommending that we stay with the firm at this point due to, uh, the costs. He has agreed not to, um, change his fees at this time. I think, you know, even though some people may not agree with all his decisions, he's there when I need him. He's been with us a long time. He's a town resident, and the firm represents many or multiple municipalities within the state.
I'll read the motion, open it up for discussion. Uh, move in accordance with Section 805 of the Hebron Town Charter. The Hebron Board of Selectmen approved the Town Manager's任 appointment of Halloran and Sage LLP to continue to serve as Town Attorney for a two-year term of office, commencing on Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, to continue until Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. Open it up for discussion.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Um, through you to ask, um, Andy, um, were other firms priced out or considered? And, and how does that usually occur when we go to appoint a Town Attorney? You mentioned that he kept his prices low. Was that in comparison to other firms, or just based on a baseline amount that you were working with?
Oh, thank you. Great question, Tiffany. That was based on, at the time when we did, um, entertainment with other firms, Halloran and Sage's price was lower than, uh, I believe, Donna can help me with this. I believe we looked at two other firms. It was either three or four in total. So, he, they were, um, at that time, the best price or for lesser, better term bang for the buck. We have interviewed firms.
Okay. I, I think the, the only other question I have, and it's certainly not meant to, to impugn anybody, um, at all whatsoever. I studied law for a hot minute in school, so I know how challenging it is. Um, but given that the Town Attorney lives in town, is there, is there a concern about ruling on issues in town? I, I suppose that's kind of something that's in the back of my mind that I'm thinking about, um, but, leave that to, to anybody else to weigh in on. Thank you.
That's, and as the manager for the last thirteen lectures, that's, uh, we had Don Holtman prior to that who didn't live in town. Uh, I believe, uh, Halloran and Sage, uh, with Mr. Slater representing us after that. That's the first time that questions come up, so I don't, I don't know the answer. I, it's just that hasn't at least been raised. That's, that's the only thing I could say at this time, but, um.
Uh, Andy, there are other lawyers in his, or in, in that group, correct?
Multiple, and, and he is our main, uh, legal counsel, but if, for other items, for possibly like building uh, RFPs, or inlands, wetlands issues, or other things, we, we use, you know, an array of people in his office, but he's, he's the main counsel to represent.
Donna, I can just jump in, um, quickly. Before we had, we were with Don Holtman for, for many, many years. But before Don Holtman, our Town Attorney was, um, Attorney Covell, and he did live in Hebron. So, it, and it has been, I mean, that was many years ago, but it has been done before without, um, an issue, I believe. And I, I'm pretty sure that, um, Attorney Slater is aware of any potential conflicts, and if there was something, he would voice that and probably, um, refer it to one of the other attorneys in his firm. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Uh, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries. Uh, we have our 2023 reappointments. Andy?
Thank you once again, Mr. Chairman. Appointments and resignations for 2023. These are the reappointments. In accordance with the board policies, the following lists, appointed terms expire in December of 2023. Each person has been contacted to determine their interest in reappointment. Also included is the attendance record and the policy regarding reappointments. The item will be continued on to the November 16th agenda for the actual reappointments based on responses received. But there's a list thus far.
Okay. In accordance with the board policy of the, the following lists, appointed terms expiring in December 2023. Each person has been contacted to determine their interest, uh, regarding the reappointments. This item will be, uh, continued on the November 16th agenda for the actual reappointments based on responses received. So, at this point in time, we do not need to take any action, is what I'm reading.
You're correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, beautiful. Does anybody have any questions on any of these reappointments at this time? Okay, and we'll actually get the full list next, our next meeting, uh, for the actual motion. Okay, correspondence, Andy?
Uh, correspondence are in the package. I'd just like to bring recognition to the award, the town received, I'm sorry, certificate of appreciation from, uh, the Connecticut River Coastal Conservation District, Inc., which Brian O'Connell is our representative on that. So, they're doing good work and they're continuing to grow and move forward. I think that's a positive thing for, uh, the environment and the watershed, so, uh, we continue to be a contributing member to that financially, because, uh, we're right smack in the middle of that. Next up would be the Town Manager's report. If there's no questions regarding that, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Okay, so we've been very busy with, uh, interviews and checking references. We, uh, interviewed our new Finance Director, Elaine Griffin, has, um, put in her notice. We want to move on this as soon as possible, so we can have some sort of transition being a very important office within the town. Elaine has been with the town for approximately thirty years, uh, mostly in some sort of financial capacity, but most recently as a long-term, uh, Finance Director. So, um, we're moving forward. I'm hoping that we will be, uh, in a position to appoint somebody soon. We're also interviewing for an assessor. Uh, hopefully, we know next week. Uh, the assessor that we had, um, a job came up in Putnam, approximately one mile from her house. Talking the same, um, financial compensation, same duties, so it was kind of a no-brainer. So, she moved on. As you all well know, we had the special town meeting. It was well-attended, and it was in-person, so progress was made there. Thank you. Uh, I've been working and still working. Got a meeting tomorrow with the towns of Andover, Columbia, and of course, Hebron, along with Crog. We're looking to regionalize the ACO operations. Those with the state mandates have increased the duties and the responsibilities, so it's time that we, um, move forward with the compact. We did receive a grant to help us do that. The grant will sunset on year four, and it's progressively, it's like a seventy-five, twenty-five. The first year, then it goes to like a fifty, whatever the ratio is, uh, with the towns portion. But there'll be an MOU that we're working on. Once that draft is available, I'll be bringing it in front of the Board of Selectmen to consider, review, and, uh, hopefully at some point approve that, um, coalition. We're, we're gonna start the, uh, biased training tomorrow for the town employees. We're gonna have three sessions. So, I know, um, Code is happy to hear that we're moving forward with that. Uh, hopefully, I'm pretty sure that'll be successful. Uh, I personally, being the Chairman of the Board of the Chatham Health District, am involved with a, uh, the committee to reappoint the Health Director at Chatham, Russ Millman, who we think's done a great job. Um, so per the state of Connecticut, we have to renew, uh, public health. We have to renew that, so we're working to do that. There's gonna be a review and interview process with, uh, some of the personnel over there, giving them some goals. But overall, Russ has, uh, done a great job, and we're happy to see that he's willing to stay on, so. That's been keeping us pretty busy. That's some, some pretty busy appointments and positions in the town there. Lot of attrition. People are leaving us mostly for, uh, retirement, just to let people know that. And that's all I had on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, our next item then would be, uh, the Parks and Recreation, uh, Policies Update, and I don't know, I, you know, listening to the people, I, I don't have a problem at all table it this for now, until we can get some more information. I will say I did do some, some research, uh, basically on the firearms thing, and, uh, right now, the state of Connecticut has roughly ten point three percent of its population have, um, have, uh, pistol permits, which I was surprised at, roughly nine hundred ninety-eight thousand, as of eleven twenty-two. So, there's a lot of, a lot of firearms out there. Um, I don't think people realize quite how likely it is that people that may be standing next to them may have, actually have a concealed carry permit. And, you know, I was surprised that, as of this point in time, the town has no policy. The other thing, and, and Mark will hopefully talk on this too, is as we start doing some of these policies, do we have to come up with some sort of teeth to back them up? So, you know, to say, you gotta have a policy without teeth, what good is it? You know, and so I don't know if Mark wanted to say anything, or, or, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I actually do, Dan. I understand why people want to ban. I'm not opposed to a ban. Makes a statement against gun violence. It may make you feel safe, but it's largely symbolic. Because there's, there's no sign, there's no ban, there's no, um, ordinance that's gonna keep somebody who has malicious intentions from bringing a gun anywhere. What a repercussion of it may be is lawyer, law-abiding citizens, um, tend to want to go along with what their community wants and have a feeling of safety, and they'll, they'd obey it, and they wouldn't bring their gun there. Um, unfortunately, there is no Connecticut statute where a police officer could intervene as a police officer and stop somebody from being at Vets Park or any park carrying a handgun. You could not arrest them for that. It's not a custodial offense. The town of Hebron cannot make it a custodial offense. And any prosecutor that I've talked to said, you, you, you'd, you'd be falsely arresting somebody if you did that. And there are differing opinions in different legal, uh, areas or different legal, uh, uh, people who, who might disagree with that, but I don't know one police officer who would do that. So, um, I, I, I just think it's just something to make us feel good. We can't put teeth behind it. So, I, 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 I would, I would, I would vote for a ban, but people have to know that, that's, that's, it's not going to accomplish what you think it's going to accomplish. There are statutes against anybody bringing a weapon on school grounds. That's an arrestable offense. It is not an arrestable offense to bring a gun on public property unless it's so deemed specifically by the state of Connecticut. And even when you stated that you can't bring guns on state property or into a state park, there, there's exceptions for that. So, it's much more complicated than you think, instead of just saying, we, we can't allow guns eh, on our open space or whatever. I know a lot of people have talked to me, um, I, I, I have a following of, uh, females who feel unsafe and want to get their pistol permits from walking on the airline trail, and they wouldn't walk out there unless they could defend themselves, so thi, this is a divided issue, and maybe it makes somebody feel good, but I have to be honest with you, forty-two years of doing this and seeing more homicides and more murders and more things than any human being should ever have to see, um, and I don't want to see anymore, but this, this is not going to really accomplish what you want it to, but if we want to make a symbolic statement against gun violence, um, I would be for that. I'm just trying to give everybody the benefit of my experience and what legal knowledge I have, having been a policeman and representing the, uh, enforcing the penal code of the state of Connecticut. That's, that's what I have to say, Dan.
Okay, thank you. Tiffany?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few thoughts. Um, I think first and foremost, what this was, I think it's a good exercise in terms of, I think we as a board and the, the team and the office, I, I think we need to, it's not enough to say something isn't in compliance with state law, right? We need to have statutes that are a part of this agenda that are shared when we're having the initial conversations, right? Because we all know that state law supersedes local law and local ordinances. So, I think this is a good exercise to understand that in the interest of transparency, we need to provide that kind of backup if we are going to make changes to policies like this, particularly ones that have the potential to, you know, cause some strong feelings from people on either side of the issue. Um, I do think if we, if we table this, which I'm in support of, it would be a worthwhile exercise to look at what surrounding towns are doing. So, let's take a look at Glastonbury, Marlboro. What do their parks and rec policies look like in regards to this, and how is it compliant with state law, and perhaps we apply a little bit of that there. Um, also, we could also consider an amendment where we could prohibit firearms in town parks where active recreation is happening, right? So, a common thread I heard from a lot of my constituents was, if I'm going to a game and someone's upset about a call, what's going to happen? And I think, you know, Mark would probably seen this too. People get super upset at sporting events, you know? Like, I was a sports reporter. I saw it. And I think that that removes an element of stress for people who would just want to go and watch their child play a sport. So, we could take that approach as well. Um, but I think ultimately, I think, you know, the next time that we approach something like this, I think we need to have more evidence in hand at the start, so that we can avoid a lot of the hubbub that we saw on social media, some of it accurate, some of it not. Um, and I think that we could move forward from there. Um, so those are just some of my, some of my initial thoughts. Also, I think it would be worthwhile to research, particularly vets. I defer to market or an attorney on this, but vets is awfully close to RAM, and so I don't know if that's in a special category of itself. I leave that to people who know the law a little bit better than I do. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did get a call also from Superintendent McNamara, and, you know, we, we both agreed that, you know, uh, to potentially do a weapons-free zone, uh, both at, at Vets Park and Bird Hill. But again, with the understanding that it's only as good as the person who's going to obey the law. You know, and you, we don't, you don't know who is standing next to you. I mean, that's the reality of it. You, you just don't know, uh. So, and, and it's at so many fronts, um, not just, you know, firearms, but you, you don't know who's parking next to you. You don't know. you you don't know who's parking next to you. You don't know. It's just such a crazy world out there. I don't know what all the answers are. But I agree, we do need to do some some more research. You know, as I say, I was surprised when I found out that literally over 10% of the population of the state of Connecticut have handgun permits. Roughly, you know, 998,000, almost a million people in this state. I was kind of shocked. So that means basically one out of every 10 people in Hebron could potentially you know, have a firearm on them. And, you know, by and large, there was a couple of other things as again, obviously, I had too much time to read. So I'm gonna I'll try to get that area out. There was talking about fires, whether within containers and all. And one of the other things that I'm concerned with is on high hazard days. Do we need to have something in there? Do they need to put something in there? So if it's a high hazard day, then, you know, fires are prohibited, period. You know, just starting to go through some of the minutia on some of that. So I definitely feel that tabling this is the best way to go for now. And like you're saying, do some fact finding and go from there. Peter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I concur. I appreciate Mark's comments and and the comments that have come through from the citizens and and Tiffany's comments about maybe getting a little bit more information about what surrounding towns do. And there's no question, I think we should be considering some compromise from relative to the original position that we took. But I I think I'd like to do it once. And so I think getting a little bit more information and the fact that we don't really have to make a decision on this today. I think would allow us to be thoughtful, give some other folks a chance to to weigh in, continue to get some comments, get some a little bit more perspective and we can come back with hopefully a decision that at least would be considered a reasonable compromise. So I am for tabling this and keeping this on a business until we can gather some additional information and then come forward with final agreement position. Thank you.
And Dan, I agree. I agree with that too. And I was gonna say, I I agree with Tiffany that we should probably table this. Made some good points about. You wouldn't bring a gun to a bar when you're drinking and feelings get hot at sporting events. Really not a place for a gun either. I agree 100%. There's a lot of gray area involved where you carry firearms. So if there's a sporting event sponsored by RAM in Vets Park or in any other location, that may carry over. If that game is actually taking place on school grounds, you couldn't carry a gun there. So but nobody and I try to get answers to these because you can read a statute and then you try to get an answer onto what it really means or how do you enforce it? Or is this an arrestable offense? What's the penalty? There's a lot of differing opinions. So I really feel strongly about Tiffany saying we probably ought to get more legal opinions about this where somebody's more of an expert in the field of firearms and firearm prohibition. I'm not saying that Ken Slater isn't that individual, but he's not a prosecutor. That's not his 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 field of expertise in law. So maybe we need to find somebody who is. And so thanks.
And I would also add into all this discussion also other dangerous weapons. This is, you know, a knife can kill you just as dead. You know, it's, you know, if we're gonna do a a stand, it should be for all dangerous type weapons. You know, I would hate to have it against one and then have another item show up that can do equal damage. So, is that Tiffany? Okay. Moving on. Our Public Works Action Committee update, Andy?
Okay, I can. I guess I can read this and or I can defer it to Slickman Casper.
Yes, okay.
You go ahead, Andy. I'm fine.
Okay. The Department of Public Works Action Committee update at the October 5th, 2023 Board of Select was being the following motion was unanimously approved establishing the Department of Public Works Action Committee. Moved that the Hebron Board of Select would establish a nine member Department of Public Works Action Committee consisting of members of the Hebron Public Building Committee, the former Hebron Public Works Building Project Survey Committee, and interested Hebron taxpayers. The purpose of this committee will to handle the day to day activities involved and determine cost location and all required plans required to construct a new Department of Public Works facility for the town of Hebron. It will be the committee's responsibility to report all activities to the Board of Selectment, also have all the expenditures approved by proper town bodies and to prepare and publish timely communications to the Board of Selectment in the Town Manager's Office for dissemination. Members appointed at the October 19th meeting were Peter Casper, Richard Steiner, Mel Lecter, and Todd Abbott. With the nine member committee, the maximum from one political party is six. The recommended prospective members of the committee have been contacted to confirm the interest in serving. And we have not heard back from Andrea Latanzi. Dave Foster, Wayne Warwick, David Rose have submitted letters of interest to be considered for appointment. And then there's a proposed motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, now how about Mark? Did he respond?
We did hear from him and I I'll speak for him and then he can jump in if you want him to permit him. He has also submitted his name for the charter revision. So the town attorney has deemed if you were to be served or be appointed to that building committee, that could be considered a public official. So with that ruling, Mark has stated he would rather be considered for the Charter Revision Commission.
Okay. I'll make just try to find it here. Make a motion that the Board of Selectmen appoint the following individuals to the Department of Public Works Action Committee. David Foster, Wayne Warwick, and David Rose with further appointments to be considered as volunteers express interest. Hearing the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Great. So moving along. Our next item would be the Charter Revision Commission final finalized charge and appointment. And this is something that can discuss it. It kind of sort of needs to be done now. Otherwise, we're going to be in violation of that 30 day window from making the charge to appointing of the committee. So did anybody want to discuss or whatever?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to understand the violation of the 30 day. I'd like that explained to me for the record because I think the initial concern I have in looking at this list is there are two potential public officials and three others. And so if some people are elected and others aren't, that could impact having to reappoint later, kind of creating more work, if that makes sense. However, if we're going to be in violation of something, I'd like to understand that now before proceeding.
Okay. Andy or Donna?
Yeah, I'll jump in. So it's a state statute that spells out the timeframe. And the 30 days would end, I believe, on Saturday. It doesn't specify whether they're calendar days or workdays. So what we're trying to do, and I most recently had conversations with the town attorney regarding this is if there's some hesitation. I could understand why. I definitely understand the dynamics. It's not what I understand. It's just explaining the way the election falls or the potential of the people being public officials would affect the makeup of the of the commission. So if I'm permitted, I just want to read what we have here and everybody that submitted their names would be named and it would be up to the Board of Selectmen to choose. But I would like to try to give you a demographic of how that should look without mentioning anybody's name. So there's 10 people that have expressed interest in being appointed to the Charter Revision Commission. Michael Dugan, a Democrat, Marianne Foote, Republican. She's an official. Davis Howell, a Democrat, he's running for office. He could be a potential public official. Donna Lanza is registered as Republican. Mal Lecter is registered as a Democrat, public official. Adam Ackman, he's a Democrat, potential public official. Heather Pettit, Democrat, public official. Jessica Stewart, registered as an R, Republican. Mark Stewart, Democrat. And then we have Allegra Weir, unaffiliated. So to try to make this without mentioning any names even with the number of public officials, which is two. And then Democrats and Rs and unaffiliated to come up with the amount of people you guys voted on was seven. To move forward, we advertise this as a committee of seven. So to be compliant with the state statute, which would run out on Saturday that of attrition, nobody's fault. That's just the way it falls. One of the things we discussed is maybe try to have a special meeting after the election, but with Saturday being the 30 day, that's out of the question. So if you don't move forward with this tonight, you have to throw the whole process out. You'd have to wait for the new board to get on. They would have to start the process all over again. So that's a decision the Board of Select would have to make. But what we had come up with to to even this out without mentioning any names is two public officials, one D, one R, and one affiliated. And then Donna, she's she's registered as an R. So it's a total of seven. So there's two. One, two, three, four, and five. What am I missing, Donna? Oh, I didn't. Well, like I said, I didn't want to read the names. So you have one, two, three, three, three Ds, three Rs, and unaffiliated.
Who's who's the we, Andy, in terms of looking over the names and determining this proposed makeup? Who's the we?
It's just it's just who submitted. The we would be Don and I to try to make it even, not picking names, just two public officials and and Republicans and Democrats and unaffiliated. We're trying to to balance what 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 should be balanced per party. That's what we've done in the past. So there's no we're not picking who should be on it. It should be two public officials and then it should be as stated to make the number of seven. Who you choose is up to the Board of Select. For an example, Mal Lecter's a public official Democrat. Heather Pett is a public official Democrat. So if you want to have a Republican, Democrat Marion Foote's a Republican official. And then so would be that that's it. So that's the only public official, other than the ones that have the potential of winning the election. And that's that's just how it falls. That's no pick or choose. These people are running for offices. Good chance. We won't know until after the election, but the 30 days falls before. It's nothing that we did.
If the number of board members increase, does it does it increase the number of public office people to be on or it's just limited to no matter what the number is?
No, it would increase.
The thing is, we've already, you know, everything has gone out with the seven. I mean, that's
We've advertised
Couple of months.
We've advertised for seven. The deadline is the 30th. If we don't act on this tonight, you have to throw this whole process out and you'll have to restart it.
And what would that and what what would that look like, Andy? Would that mean, let's say, let's say we do that. I'm not saying that's what we're interested in, but let's say we did. And would we be looking then at a referendum on charter changes for next November as opposed to May? Or is there a possibility to still get charter revision questions done by the May referendum? Because I think that was the goal here, correct?
No, we would still
I'm just curious.
Yeah, we would still shoot for the calendar that we put in the packet.
Can I jump in? It's Donna.
Yeah.
The the goal is November.
Right, always was.
There it was.
Always, always.
It's never made. Yeah, it's always, it is always the November election. What it would do is it would move the schedule out a month. So the commission would have one month less time to work, which is is really gonna crunch things. But, you know, it's doable. We'd have to redo the schedule, but it is doable.
If we had to rewarn we're gonna lose a month right there. Wouldn't we lose two months? Because we'd have to rewarn it and then get applications again and then make an appointment. So we'd be I'm gonna say at least two months down the road.
You would you would have to start the 30 day clock again.
Yeah.
So either at your next meeting on the 16th, you could start that 30 day clock again. And we'd have to wait a month and then the new board would make the appointments. Or we could wait until the new board is on in the first meeting in December and then redo that resolution and then start the clock then. One thing we I guess we didn't consider, I don't know if it's possible, would be to restart the clock tonight and redo the resolution that you did on October 5th. That just came up. I'm not sure. I I don't see why we couldn't do that, but that's a possibility.
I'd have to ask the attorney that to be
Right, right.
He told me if you don't do it tonight, you gotta throw it out. I talked to him tonight. If you don't do this tonight within the 30 days, I don't know if you could start that clock again tonight. I I could maybe try to reach him. He did say he was gonna be unavailable tonight, otherwise he would have been at this meeting. It wasn't for lack of trying to get him. He had a prior engagement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Having to wait 30 days to be fair to everyone that wants to participate and to find out who's actually be a public official and not just a potential public official and exclude them just based on that. I'm more interested in fairness than having to wait an extra 30 days. That's that's how I feel. I'm only here for two more meetings anyway.
Yeah, I don't know. I I was looking at it to be, you know, because I'd kind of made a list. And, you know, without taking into account who may or may not get in. You know, I was thinking Michael Dragon, Marianne Foote, as the R, as the as a public official, Donna Lanza, as the R, Jessica Stewart. I was thinking Mark Stewart, as he's he's just been so solid and has been through these kinds of processes before. And I was thinking Allegra Weir. And then, you know, as for the, you know, you had Mel or Heather. And it just seemed to be a perfect balance. And I let, you know, you guys decide who you thought best on that. And that way it'd be three, three and one. And my other fear is, you know, I know these people that may or may not get elected, want to serve on this. But I really think they need to get their feet wet, per se, you know, quote unquote, in their respective boards and trying to be part of a charter revision committee and figuring out what their responsibilities are and dealing with being newly elected to to a board. I would much rather having them working with the board that they've been elected to to find out all the nuances with that. That that's not my own feeling. I I know for myself to try to have, you know, that a selectman and try to be on a charter commission or something else, I think it would be too much. Um, I'm afraid it wouldn't get done well. Something would have to slip. That's my own feeling.
That's a fair point.
It's a fair point, but I think that'd be up to the individual to decide as well, right? Like, we couldn't make that decision for people. Per se.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying, you don't know what you're getting into until you're actually in that seat.
Is anybody opposed, is anybody opposed to uh expanding from seven to nine?
It's already been warned. It's already been warned. And who are you going to put on, you know?
We'd have to start, we'd have to start over. It's back to the thirty day issue and how difficult is that? I it's difficult to decide tonight. I I couldn't personally, you know, if someone is a potential public official, it's sort of they're at a significant disadvantage in this dialogue if we have to make a decision tonight because it's sort of, it would immediately tip the balance and we'd have to vote in new members, uh, within a week, within two weeks. And so, um, I guess we really probably should start with if we're against delaying it for some valid reasons that have been presented, then we should maybe make that decision first, delay or not delay. Um, if we're against delaying it, then, well, then we have to decide tonight. And if we're not against delaying it, then we have to live with the consequences of starting over and a delay that would come with that. So I think that's probably really the general issue is either delay or not delay. It's sort of a where we really should be focusing our energy this minute. Uh, and if we decide collectively to delay, then when we move on, if we don't, then we have to decide the members tonight. And it'd be, for me, it'd be hard to know that people are going to potentially get elected next week and then have to remove them a week later. It's, I don't know, I I I struggle with that a little bit because that's not fair to those folks. I mean, timing is timing and it's unfortunate and and, you know, if they get elected, great, that's what their main objective is. Uh, but if they don't, then they don't serve in any capacity, which they then would be at a disadvantage. So I think we have to decide now, do we uh, do we want to delay or not delay? And then based on that, the conversation moves forward.
Good point, Peter. I I I think the revision of the charter being postponed is going to do do no great harm to anything. But trying to make a decision on individuals right now could do some possible harm to people, and I have no desire whatsoever whatsoever to hurt anybody or or exclude anybody from participation in public service. So I'm for the delay.
I agree with Mark. I'm for the delay.
Okay.
I know what it means, but I'm for it.
Okay.
And I know it's a challenge, and it's not what we want to do, but I would agree with Mark as well.
Okay, so it sounds like we are deciding to delay. I I'm against that decision only because this has been going on for months. We all knew this was coming up. We all knew what the timeframe was. We knew when we were supposed to be making these decisions. And here we are at the last minute, not making the decisions. So I I'm saddened by the fact that, you know, we were supposed to be making these decisions and now we're not.
But we definitely could have done a better job because when we knew that these people were running, clearly, we could have had a conversation that, you know, maybe they should pull themselves out because they're going to run into this timing issue. So I think the criticism is fair. But, okay, um, we'll learn from it and and move forward. But Mark's point is that because we didn't think properly ahead, we are effectively going to have to then exclude people. And is that what we're trying to do here? And if the answer is no, then we admit that we could have done a better job with how we thought through this and communicated with these folks saying, hey, if you're going to run for office, maybe you should remove your name from this because it's going to be difficult because of timing. So I think the criticism is definitely warranted, but the outcome, if the outcome of accepting criticism is will also be fair as well. So it's not, it's not a great outcome, but I think fairness rules the day.
Okay, well, it sounds like the board has decided to postpone this. And we'll find out the legalities of of uh rewarning. And if people have to resubmit, I I don't know, but uh that's, sounds like the decision of the board. Okay.
Does that have to be a formal vote?
Uh, probably. So all in favor of postponing until after the election, the Charter Revision Commission appointments signify by saying, uh, actually, all in favor of postponing the Charter Revision appointments and finding out from the town attorney the process to reactivate the commission following the election. All in favor of that signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Uh, Dan Larson, myself, nay. So motion carries. Uh, next thing is the America twenty two thousand, two hundred and fifty, wow, uh, Kennedy Com- uh, Commission. So, Andy, did you want to talk about this?
Yes, I guess. Uh, the United States of America will mark the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence on July fourth. I don't know why they picked that date. The American Twenty Fifth Connecticut Commission has been created and Hebron has been requested to participate at a local level. The Town Center Project has offered to be involved with the coordination and the town manager in recommending the TTCP be designated as the lead in coordinating Hebron's America Two Hundred and Fifty Celebration. And then there's a proposed motion.
Okay, move to the Hebron Board of Selectmen designate the Town Center Project Incorporated as the lead organization in coordinating He- uh, Hebron's America Two Two Hundred and Fifty Celebration. All in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, Tiffany, did she leave?
No, I'm having dinner. Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Okay, um, what are we having?
My husband made me some dumplings and no one needs to see me eat dumplings, so.
Uh, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Yeah, I I can't think of a better group to do this. Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, is there any other old business to come before us? Okay, uh, new business. We have the draft agenda for the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. That being said, we are going to have to add on to the agenda, the information regarding uh the resetting of the clock for the Charter Commission. And what other other steps need to be taken on that? Uh, is there anything else that we discussed that needs to go on?
The parks policy, we're going to add back on there.
Yeah, but I'm not sure if we're going to, well, we'll add it on. I'm not sure if anything's going to be ready for discussion at this point. But we'll 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 have it on there. Okay, anybody comes up with anything else? Uh, let the let the office know.
That's still this board that's going to be at that meeting, even though the elections are going to be taking place.
Okay.
That'll be the last meeting of this present board.
Okay.
I'm not that anyone's going to attend, but it's still your last.
Right. Well, I'm just, yeah, we'll find out on the charter. I'm just thinking that. Okay. I'm just, I'm I'm just overthinking things. I'm sorry. So the consent agenda, our items considered to be routine in nature, which the board may or may not uh, discuss individually and may vote on as a uh, any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion in a separate note if necessary. We have the October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three public hearing minutes and the October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting minutes and the tax refunds as listed. Is anybody want anything pulled out or have any issues?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you're going to have to pull out the minutes because I need to abstain from both of those. However you want to do that, because I wasn't there.
Okay, so we will vote on the minutes. Uh, and then we will vote on the tax refunds. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the minutes of October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three public hearing and the minutes of October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting. All in favor, everybody signify by saying aye. Mark?
Mark. Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Uh, Tiffany?
I abstain.
And myself, aye. Motion carries. And then, uh, the approval of the tax refunds as listed. Uh, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Mr. Stewart, do you feel like you want to jump in and say, yep, you called me? We served on a lot of years together.
I will call you, Dan, but on on non non-town business. But it was, um, it was, um, a pleasure to watch everybody work tonight. And, uh, I know you had some, uh, difficult decisions to make and, uh, that the selectmen have comported themselves well, so good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, laser reports. Tiffany?
I don't have anything formal to report, except on just from an open space perspective. Um, I was really pleased to see the turnout at the recent town meeting. I thought that that was great. Um, and I was really happy to see people come out um, and vote in support of those projects. So just a general comment, nothing specific.
Okay, uh, Mark?
I just one thing to report. Next Thursday, we have our big emergency management meeting with, uh, schools, public works, town government, the police, fire, EMS to come up with, um, uh, finalized version or the beginning of a finalized version of our active shooter response. So everybody's been really working hard towards, uh, being the best we can. And after what happened in Maine, my other home and seeing how scared my wife and her friends have been, um, something we really need to take seriously and do the best we can at. Such a tragedy up here. That's it, Dan.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Peter?
Nothing from me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and nothing from me, but something from either me or Donna. Uh, and I don't know, Donna, do you want to report or or whatever? Uh, we attended the and I guess it would be a preliminary meeting.
Kickoff meeting for the Maple Fest twenty twenty-four. Yes. Very well attended. Very well attended, lots of interest and definitely a lot of energy. Lots of good ideas to bring back, um, they're calling it bringing it home, but to bring back Maple Fest and make it, um, as close to the original Maple Fest of thirty years ago as possible, but with, uh, you know, modern, a modern twist. So the Town Center Project is heading it up. We've got lots of great support from, uh, new volunteers and existing businesses. Flower Girl and Scott Kaufman are very involved and, um, committees are already forming and it should, um, be a very successful event. And we will have more to report as it moves along.
Yeah. The only thing I would like to add is because this is their first foray into something this large. I have all the faith in the world that the town will give them the support. I'm hoping that the businesses in town, uh, will also work with them. Because that's always been an issue in the past. Um, and they were talking about it, where where people basically will jump in and and, you know, do a booth or do something without going through the process, you know, basically trying to, I guess you could say freeload onto those who are are, you know, trying to carry the weight. I think we, as as a board, I'm hoping will support them in trying to work their way through through a lot of those types of issues. And the town will support them also. They've got a lot of energy, as Donna says, a lot of spirit. I just, maybe on my prior lives, a lot has to happen to pull something like that together. Yeah, so, um, I think they will ask for support if they need it, uh, or help, and I'm hoping we'll be there to give them that support and help if they need it. So, anyway, um, that's it. So with that, open it back up for public comment.
Allegra Weir was here and she did have, um, she wanted to make a comment. I'm not sure if she's still still here. Allegra, are you there? Um, and at this point, there's nobody else for public comment.
Okay, well, with that said, then, uh, make a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn at eight twenty-nine PM.
Okay, thank you all. Have a a safe weekend and we'll see you next.
Thanks, everybody for coming.
Night, everyone.
Good night. Thanks, guys. Good meeting.